Turned off. Yeah, look, it's. Sure as well. Didn't hear us, Dan? Eight thirty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Everybody. Call the meeting to order. Um, we do have a quorum. Need approval, the agenda and the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second in their discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion will carry. Um, Rich Brown, good morning.
Morning. Um. Jackie, Jack, did you get my email this morning?
Oh, no. Muted.
I'm muted.
Hold on a sec, Rich.
Yep, there you go.
Okay.
Alright.
Now, we're good. Go ahead, Rich.
Alright, Jackie, I sent you an email this morning on that resolution for these project, that project. Did you get that?
I haven't had time to look yet.
Okay, well, there's a resolution there just to allow me to sign the contract. What we've got is, um. We had the bid lettings. Um. That was, uh, the twenty. I think it was the twenty first of April. The DOT let the project from Grafton to the county line going east. Um, that's an inch and a half millon fill with a special asphalt mixture. It's a high pro they call it. Engineer's estimate was two hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And in the bidding process, there were a couple items that I had inadvertently left out by accident. Um, the bids came in at three hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-two, so about seven percent higher. Um, than what we thought, but some of that was, there was a bid item that I had. I used the DOT bid express estimate dollar value for. And that bid, that, that item itself was significantly higher than what we had planned on, but for the most part, it's not, not a huge increase in, in what we got bid. So, um, in that respect, I recommend we award that contract to Heartland Asphalt for three hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. And then, um, that resolution I sent to Jackie was for to allowing me to sign the contract in Doc Express.
As I say, I keep getting a warning from Doc Express saying that our, what my right to sign is gonna disappear or whatever, so I just keep ignoring it because I know we're not.
Yeah. Well, and maybe I should, maybe it's easier if I just had, if I took you off of it altogether and then.
Anyway, because it would have been AJ now he's a terrorist, so.
You still show up as a user and probably should just get rid of it altogether. That way you don't get those emails anymore, but.
No, it doesn't. I just delete them, so, but that's fine. Yeah, probably good to get rid of it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, we need to award the contract to Heartland Asphalt. For, we'll call it LFM dash seven six dash seven X dash nine eight.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
Motion is our second? Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Motion will carry.
Okay.
For the.
Resolution.
Yeah. And then, uh, we need a motion to approve the resolution to have Rich sign for that contract.
So moved.
Motion marked their second? Second. Motion is second in our discussion. Both of them vote Abrams, aye? Maybe.
Right.
Stone? Aye. That motion will carry it, so you can sign that contract.
Thank you. Um, the other thing we've got going on is I've been working, trying to get a contractor in. We've got that, uh, the BMC road. Needs a lot of patching done to it. I've got a contractor that gave me a quote, seems reasonable. Um, a dollar a night, a dollar, a hundred and twelve dollars a square yard. Um, but that's covering a lot of patches. His total quote was a hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and five dollars. And I was, uh. Not going to approve that. It's maintenance work, but the issue I had was they weren't gonna try to, they're gonna try to get in there late June. And that's about when, uh. They've got Matthew Construction moving in for a paving project over there, so I begged and pleaded and they made it, made it work their schedule. They might be able to get in here. Late this week, early next week to start doing patching out there. So, I think it's a better value for us to have them do it for that cost. We'll get it covered into the budgets either way, but it'll probably span both budgets, but I think we can get that done. But it'll be nice to have it done. It'll give us quite a few more years on that road before we have to do something major to it. So I can push the pending project that I had back a few years and see how the patches hold up. I really wish we would have known that there was a, uh. A wind tower project last year. Um. That way we could have probably worked out with the wind tower people that, hey, you damaged this road or increased the damage on it. We want some money, but we didn't know about it. Um, and so. We ended up having to pay for it. The nice, the, the nice thing about this maintenance side thing too is it's a local road. It's not a foreign market route. And so it's gotta be, any repairs or maintenance has to be done with local dollars and not foreign market or any other federal aid, so. Um. They're gonna get it done faster than we will, and we're gonna keep in contact with BMC, so we're not hindering it. We're gonna try to leave the road open mostly so that they can still get traffic in and out, except for maybe that north mile. We may be able to close that completely and get stuff done faster, but we'll work with, uh, BMC on that, so.
And maybe they'll go through. Trucks have to go through fertile during that time then, or how's that work?
Um, we're not gonna worry about the south end so much. They'll be able to get north and then maybe take one of the gravels either way. To Highway Nine. And it.
So they have concrete patches or?
Yep, they're gonna be concrete patches. So.
Cool. That'll work.
So that's that. And then, uh, I do have the crew on ten hour days. They started this week. Um, I put some caveats. I didn't write anything down, but I had, I know that RC has informed all the, all the employees that we don't wanna have people not answering the phone in case there's issues. Especially as on Fridays and Saturdays. Um. And I guess. He had mentioned it to everybody and everybody's kind of on board with it, but if we start seeing problems, then I'm gonna rescind that and we're gonna go back to five eights, because I don't need to have that. We don't need to have that kind of a headache, and I think if they wanna, if we wanna have ten hour, if they wanna have ten hour days and enjoy that. That, um, obviously, yeah, they know they're getting their ten hours per day in, so they're getting their forty in, but it's also a big benefit to them to have Fridays off. And, um, if we're gonna have trouble with getting people coming in, we're just gonna get rid of it altogether, so. I think it's gotta be a give and take on both ends. And that's how I see it right now, so I don't think we're gonna have any problem with it. I think RC's got some people lined up to cover, but just in case we do have some issues. So, um. That's that. I had a couple phone calls. Last week. From the wind tower people. Um, actually, one of them was just, how do you, I know that we have that, that, that agreement for the drainage district tiles. Um, and maybe you guys can clarify something for me. I think up in Minnesota. They're required to bore underneath any. District mains. I didn't see anything in the agreement that told them how they had to go under, over, around the drainage district mains in Worth County. I did see that there are repair procedures, but I guess they wanted some clarification on how you guys wanted to handle, um, running their, their electrical lines from substation to tower or whatever, and how they wanted.
Must have some agreements with the landowners too on that. I know usually. It was either, they either had to be. So many, I think any lot tile line they crossed, they had to be like, they were supposed to be two feet.
Right. I think they wanted to just know, are you guys gonna require them to bore under any mains? The, the agreement says anything under, I, I don't have the specific word verbiage in front of me. I thought it was thirty-six inch and under needs to be repaired, whatever. I don't remember what the agreement was, but I guess they just wanna know, are you guys gonna require them to bore it, or can they trench through them and repair them? And what does, what do the repairs look like? And I said, well, you gotta put them back to pre-existing condition or better, so.
Right. I got no problem as long as they, they locate and make sure they get the cables underneath them, you know, beforehand.
You'd rather them go underneath? I mean, if they're.
They don't have to bore it. If they could just go through them and like open cut them. Or put them back, you know, put some sand or rock back in to bed the pipe. Make sure the pipe is better. They're gonna move.
If they can locate tile. If they can locate the tile, then I don't understand why they'd have to cut through them at all. They can dig around them and not, not, I know some of them are probably clay, so they probably can't do that, but if they do fail. They're gonna have to fix them, and they wanted to know what, what the repair procedure was.
I wouldn't, I mean, in my opinion, I wouldn't say let them trench through or just cut through and then come back and repair. I'd make them either dig around them or bore under them, whatever they wanna do. But as far as just pulling through, I mean, I don't think that's.
Yeah, so.
The worst, worst problem is if, if you go through your trench or you pull something through at one spot, you could affect it, you know, ten feet, fifteen feet each. Further. And if, if they're only making repair on that spot, are we, do we have damage each direction now, you know?
Right.
So they rip them in, or they actually trench them in, or hole them in, and you know what you're doing?
All they told me was they were gonna, they were gonna trench it, and they wanted to know to, to get around the public tiles, whether they had to. If they were required to bore them or not bore them, and I don't recall you guys ever mentioning anything about requiring to bore. But I think what I'm gonna do is call them back and say, look, I think you guys need to locate every one of them before you go through. Avoid breaking the tile, and if they're old enough tile where you can't avoid having to fix it, then you fix it before you leave it. And then I don't know what the, you know, backfill procedure should be is, you know, if they're going underneath it, obviously, you're gonna wanna put some stable material underneath. So that the repair doesn't settle.
Yeah, I mean, they should put something, some sort of backfill material in there that would.
What I will tell them is you aren't requiring them to bore. Under the mains. Correct?
Yeah. It'd be better if they locate them and not just go ripping through them and come back and fix them later.
Right. I think they need to repair them as they go, so they don't forget about them.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I'll tell them.
Right. Them if they're running, I wouldn't even wanna cut it. I'd just some bore under, not have the water in the ditch and mess with it, but.
Right.
They work on it, you know? Why turn it into a mud hole?
Right.
Yeah, sometimes it is, but.
Well. I mean, I think that if they wanna bore it, they can. I'm not gonna tell them no, but I think they just don't wanna deal with it either, and they're still gonna have to locate them to know where they gotta bore.
Yes.
I think if, I'd say if they, they should bore anything over twenty-four inch.
As you said, those larger mains, if they could bore on them.
Yeah, they'd be better off they bore on anything larger than twenty-four inch. The twelves and the tens, you know, there's a lot of them out there. That they cut through, you know, locate and cut through and fix them.
So you'd rather have them bore anything over twenty-four inches then? Alright.
Yep.
We need to. Remember the.
Yeah, should we come back and maybe amend our agreement?
Let me see how he responds to that request.
Okay.
Regardless, they gotta fix them. They gotta fix them.
Yeah, they gotta fix it, right, you know?
They gotta fix it regardless whether they bore or don't bore, but. Maybe I'll just say, look, uh, there isn't a requirement, but they would prefer that you bore twenty-four and larger.
Correct.
Okay. And you won't, you won't proceed until you get them repaired. You.
Get them fixed right away.
Yep, okay. Um, Mark, I don't know, Russ just gave me this too. He said that Tom Brackey has a twelve inch tile that needs repair.
Yeah, it was, how many feet was it again?
Seven hundred feet, I think he said, and the approximate cost was forty-five hundred dollars. So. We're gonna make a work order on this. Um, it's an old concrete pipe that had multiple suck holes, and it's been repaired.
Clay. Isn't it clay?
Um. Was it clay or co- uh, or? He thought, Russ said he thought it was concrete, but.
Could be.
But anyway, we're gonna put a work order together to get it repaired.
Yeah, he had a top, he had a Tyler there, and that's the section that's bad for now. I mean, I don't think there's any other problems there. It's in the peat ground down there, so that's the issue.
Okay.
What district is it?
Uh, thirty-one on the main.
Thirty-one main?
Yep.
It dumps into DD seven, but.
And if it's peat ground, is that?
Tom Farms, well, Tom Farms, that whole section, a piece of ground there, so, um, I believe it goes up to the town of Joyce, don't?
Southeast of Joyce, yep, goes into town.
So it's, it's on area he's been having, just a specific area there he's been having issues with. He farms everything right up to the edge of Joyce, so he should know. He should know.
Yeah, it's, it's about, it looks like it's in a location that maybe it merges with a twenty-four inch main also. It's from about that connection point back.
Someone Matt did here a couple years ago replaced that twenty-four or whatever it was, I think.
Right.
Up into the Brackey ground. Another Brackey ground.
Right. So. Just so you guys know that, and then, uh. So we're gonna work.
Reasonable.
What's that?
Actually, pretty reasonable bid from what Russ and I were figuring out on Friday there. I think per foot, it's pretty reasonable to replace.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, when you think about it, yep.
Did, how much per foot was it actually? You remember?
Uh, well, forty-five hundred dollars. It was seven hundred. Well, he said seven hundred feet, so.
Yeah. I thought per foot, it sounded pretty reasonable for twelve inch tile.
For six bucks, yeah.
Yeah, for six bucks foot, that's pretty reasonable.
Right. Yeah.
I would say it'd be almost double that normally, so.
Yeah, usually, I always, my rule of thumb is whatever the diameter is, it's, if it's twelve inches, it's twelve bucks a foot, so.
So I thought it was a pretty good deal.
Yep, so, um, anyway, and then, uh. Kenny, we're gonna put a work order together for that intersection of Vine and one oh five. And at least get that culvert to drain away from the field and put it down into where those intakes are, and then, um, I don't know. If you wanna discuss.
Drive off after, after the meeting, drive over there again?
Yeah, yeah, let's take a look at that and see, because I don't know what the elevations are down there and what the heck that thing is all con. Is there one main or two there?
There's two. There's a forty-two inch and a thirty-six.
Okay. And they are run parallel?
Close.
Okay.
Right there they are.
Yeah, we didn't know if they.
The forty-two actually turns right there and goes south across the road, I think, and then comes back. And crosses the gravel road again.
Okay. Well, anyway, let's go out there. I wanna get a work order. Let's get the ditch dug out so that water doesn't blow right through the field and it gets down into where the bridge is east, and we'll do that end, and then I don't know as far as the drainage district tile intakes, how that works, but we can discuss that out there.
Okay, I'll, I'll be with you right after meeting.
Alright. That's all about for today, unless you guys have something?
Nope.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Rich.
Yep.
Alright, drainage. Accept the engineer's report for DD forty-six lap nine and DD thirteen lap three.
I don't have forty-six. This, this time I don't have forty-six, but I have thirteen.
Okay.
So we wanna accept thirteen only then?
Yes.
Level three? Can I take a motion to accept, uh, the engineer's report for DD thirteen lap three?
So moved.
Second.
There's motion, second in our discussion.
The only thing is, I'm wondering if we wanna get on the phone with John and if we're gonna set a hearing date or not.
Oh. For that, or for.
For that one. For that repair.
Sure.
The estimate will go to four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, do you have his number ten or?
No.
I should have it memorized. Okay, Ken, I got it.
This is nine first?
Yep.
One?
Five one five. Four six zero. Nine six nine nine.
Hello, this is John.
Morning, John. Ken here. We got your speaker calling.
Good morning, Ken. I was just getting ready to thank Jackie to to give you an idea what time it's on.
Now, right now, how's that sound?
Well, that's perfect.
Yep. Um, so the question is, uh, setting a hearing date for DD thirteen lap three?
Yes.
What's your suggestion?
Well, so we gotta, we have to have at least twenty days' notice for that hearing, so that puts us out to the very earliest. Um. Be the week of the twenty-fifth of May. Like this is Memorial Day, but I think for Jackie Kennedy, we probably wanna go out a little bit farther.
Yes, please.
You wanna go?
After June second, for sure.
After the primary?
Way after.
Okay. Yep, that would be, that would be fine by me.
How about the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, maybe?
June, June fifteenth.
Yeah, it's for June fifteenth.
Okay.
Did. I'm sorry, I missed it. Did you wanna do forty-six that day too, or not sure yet?
Yeah, we'll be able to do that.
Will we be able to do them both?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great.
Or just waiting for, we need a new report from you, or will you just amend what you have?
Uh, I can actually give an update on that. We did look at those plans and, and yes, that tile was replaced. But it was the same size tile. So the fill efficiency stayed the same in the report. Um, they did try to go a little bit deeper. Uh, but that deeper was, it's still only about uh, three feet of flow line on a twenty inch tile, so it only had. It maybe had twenty, twenty inches of cover on it. So, really, the only change in our report is the age of that tile. It's not a hundred years old, it's forty years old, but it's still undersized and fairly shallow. They just, they didn't have an outlet, so, so looking through, uh, Jen's reports and the plans. It, it doesn't change our design consideration at all.
Okay, good. Okay, so we can go, probably go ahead and just do both of those that day of the fifteenth then.
Yep, yep, I think both will be pretty straightforward. Thirteen is just a repair. Just hear landowners' opinions on it and move on, and forty-six is a, a, it's only a handful of landowners impacted, so it's gonna be a fairly small, small decision, I think. Not small decision, small, small group, but won't, it won't become an extended hearing.
So shall we shoot for like ten and one, or ten and?
Yeah, it'd be good to give a give a little bit of space there, just make sure we're not.
Overlapping?
Backing them up too much, yeah.
And everybody can still eat?
Yep, yep, once gives a nice, a nice, uh, natural break.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
I think that'll work for us here, so.
Yeah, motion on that?
Uh, actually, right now I've got a motion and a second on, uh, proven engineer's report for DD thirteen laps three. Uh, we had some other discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now, take a motion to set the drainage, uh, public hearing for those drainage districts for June fifteenth.
I'll make the motion.
Motion marked?
Second.
Second, but can any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried. That is covered for June fifteenth then. Okay. Anything else, John?
I, I don't believe so. I'll, I'll work with Jackie and make sure I get the, the right, find out the right hearing there, but.
Okay.
I'll probably call you later if I'm not swamped with. Valleys.
Did, did you ever get back to you about the notice on that altercation?
No.
Okay, I will. I bet it's been a little bit of days, and they're gonna call me this morning, so.
Okay.
I'll ask them about that.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Okay, thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Yep, thank you.
Bye bye. Okay, um, there are petition requests from Lisa Quong. Grainage District twenty-two lap ten and ten B.
So basically. Any direction from you guys, are we gonna? Can we have Rich look at it first? Do we just go straight to John with it? Do we have a landowner meeting first and see if everybody involved wants the same thing that she wants? How, how do you wanna handle it?
Has Rich seen this? It's out on the corner of four hundred and Zenia. So is it's our district, gonna must join in with Mitchell almost soon. Does it go that way?
But that, that part is all in.
Does that be going to Mitchell or is it going to?
Sure, bro.
Sure, go there.
Four hundred? They'd go to Mitchell if it's four hundred.
One, right up here.
Yeah, there's a Mitchell.
Yep, four hundred and Zenia.
It, Russ and I talked about it. It goes to the main, and the main is fine, but I don't know if this whole thing needs to this whole, I, I don't know which ladder, because hers is right up here, so I don't know if it's just lap ten or if you need I don't know, two, or?
They're in the north half of the northeast corner of section one.
Yeah, just right here.
She wants replacements or new or?
Um.
She wants improvements.
Been very much the last few years. Last year at a time, I looked at it, said the county tile was overloaded. My petition due, county to upsize the tile. Cause that, you know, next steps of the process. Um.
I think just like turn it over to John.
Turn it over to John.
Okay. But rather be.
We just suppose.
I mean, it's an improvement, so.
Yep. Yeah, and if it's gonna be an upside, then at least an engineer tells you what size to put in.
When you're hearing on that first.
I was gonna say, should the other landowners?
We should probably just have a landowner meeting.
Yeah. And then turn it to John.
Yes.
Because they should have a say if we're gonna send, spend a bunch of money or not.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we, I mean, I personally try to let it go that way first before we get involved, I guess, yeah, if you wanna.
And that.
Or be involved regardless.
It wouldn't happen till fall anyway, if, if, at the earliest, so could we shoot for like? Maybe do?
You're doing any kind of measure.
Um. But I gotta send out notices.
No, I understand.
Oh.
You're doing the fifteenth, so we have a meeting.
You may have just had a landowner meeting.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. If that works for you, then you just gotta send them a postcard or something just to say there's a, been a possible improvement for petition.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be, still have landowner meetings, or we don't know about this? We don't know about the virus, I think, yeah.
Okay, I'm on it, so.
Right.
Alright, sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just something to think about.
Yeah.
We have, we have a hundred person.
Or do you wanna throw it to July thirteenth and hope that we can do it in person? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I mean.
It's up to you guys.
We're gonna have to, I mean, some of these meetings, I'm sure we're gonna still have planning meeting room big enough for social distancing at the minimum for the next six months to a year, probably. So, really, we probably should almost consider just having, well, I think, I don't, I've never seen a drainage meeting over a hundred people yet. So I think we could zoom, do, just plan Zoom.
But you gotta consider the landowners.
I know, I know.
And this one would probably be easy for her, because this is a firm, well, so.
But.
But they can zoom on a phone, correct?
Yeah, alright.
They can zoom on a phone, so they can be on the phone. It's just a matter of controlling the meeting to, to get good feedback.
Yeah.
People, they wanna talk.
Basically, give whoever's on the phone, walk through and step. So I heard someone say, hey, you know?
Well, and as soon as you guys decide that we're open to the public. Then the public distancing kicks in and.
Right.
Yeah.
Except that's.
That could happen this month.
They're working that way pretty strongly, but I don't think we're gonna do with, with the social, the six foot rule or we're gonna call and, and try to have a face shield between us. That's probably not gonna change.
Yeah.
I doubt it's gonna change before the year's over.
And we don't have big enough places to deal with that.
No, I mean, even the ULC, if you have thirty people, we couldn't get.
Ah. So we gotta figure out. So we gotta figure out where we can even have meetings.
So that's why, I mean, if possible, I think we should, by sending them phone. I mean, it's, I know it's gonna make it tougher for people.
Yep.
It's a new reality. It's a new reality for a while.
We wanna try for June then?
June eighth?
Sure.
And then motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion a second to have a landowners meeting, June eighth.
By Zoom.
By Zoom, or phone conference? Landowners on that drainage district. Any other discussion?
What time?
Ten o'clock? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. All right, uh, is there any drainage claims?
We got a public hearing, nine o'clock.
You know, Larry? Okay. So. Motion to.
Oh, recess.
Yep.
Motion recess.
Motion recess by. Second, Mark, second by Ken. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Joe's hooking up?
He just came in.
Okay. I'll take the motion. Well, let's get him, make sure he's on first before we, before we start that, just to make sure we got.
He's connected.
Yeah, audio with him.
Wait, Chris.
Or is he waiting for?
No, I've, I've got him in, so it's just, yeah, it's just negotiating his audio.
There you go. Joe Myrie, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now? I unmuted.
Got you, Joe. We got you. Okay.
All right, perfect.
Okay, well, we just, we just recessed our regular meeting, so we're gonna open up the, uh, public hearing to amend the urban renewal plan um, for the County Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
Motion for that?
Motion to open their public hearing. Second, motion as, by Mark, second by Ken. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, our public hearing is open. Um. Joe, basically, we're amending our plan due to the size and upscale of our development. We were gifted.
Yeah. Right, what we did is we actually consolidated the phase one and phase two, and we broke the original plan into, um, phase one and phase two only, so they could get started on the utility work, um, last fall. Uh, that was the phase one element of the project. Phase two was the plating, uh, side of that. Uh, but now with the casino donating the additional land area, um, we've increased the, uh, size of the project from the plating. Uh, we went from eight lots to twelve lots with this phase three, and we've consolidated all three, um, phases into one proposed bond indebtedness. Um, again, to utilize tax increment financing, you have to incur debt, and so, uh, we're, we are looking at doing internal loan. Uh, I believe, I think that's your intention. Uh, but we will all, after today's public hearing, will, will have just one, one project cost estimate that, at two point five million, where originally we had one point one, and we're gonna add an additional one point one to the plan. Uh, but we're just, uh, um, saying that we will not exceed two point five million as a maximum indebtedness. Um, not that we will even get near that. Hopefully, it'll be closer to two million dollars, but, uh, so we've set that, uh, uh, total indebtedness a little high. Um, I think we were at two point three is what the engineer's estimate was. And I took liberties after talking to AJ and Jackie, um, of raising that up to two point five, so. Um, but we're not doing anything different. We're not adding any area to the urban renewal, um, plan itself. All we're doing is complying with state statute as identifying, uh, specific projects within the urban renewal area. So there will be no additional, uh, land added to the overall consolidated urban renewal plan, so an ordinance will not be necessary. Uh, we only will approve this by resolution after we close the public hearing, uh, and after that resolution is approved, um, uh, we're good to go forward. So, uh, pretty simple amendment, uh, just complying with statute by identifying the project and the amount of indebted, indebtedness that will be incurred with the project. So certainly would answer any questions that, uh, the board or the public might have.
Yep, um, is there anyone, uh, in the public that's on the, on the meeting that has any, uh, questions or concerns with our project, with our, um, urban renewal plan?
Just state your name.
I'll ask one more time if there's anyone from the public that would, uh, has any questions or concerns on our urban renewal plan, public hearing. I do not hear any, uh, supervisors have any other questions or concerns with it?
No.
I wish you're good.
Okay.
I agree, we close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion by Abrams, second by Smavy to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. I'll take a motion to open our public meeting.
I will soon move.
Second.
Motion a second to reopen the public meeting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. Regular session. There we go, sorry. Okay, now, our resolution, twenty twenty point oh five, point oh four, point oh one. Resolution to approve the twenty twenty amendment, the urban renewal plan for Worth County Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
So move.
I'll second. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Roll call votes. Abrams?
Aye.
Smavy?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, Joe, I think we got her covered.
All right, good job, guys. I'll sign off and have a productive meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for your stuff.
All right, you bet. Take care, guys.
Bye.
You too.
Okay, um, back up to drainage claims, already?
Not yet.
Nothing?
I have one. I, I gotta get something for you to sign, but, um, I, my first round of postage was six hundred and twenty-five dollars. There'll be more.
For drainage?
No.
Oh.
For the election.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I could have a motion.
That was for just sending out the, uh, request cards.
No, the ballot, the ballots.
That's the ballots.
Yeah, I've sent.
Oh, you worked your sound, so, okay, thank you.
Take a motion to approve the claims for the postage.
I will soon.
Second, motion a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion will carry.
Thank you.
Um, now we need to set a public hearing date for the fiscal year twenty budget amendment. Um, says May twenty-fifth, but.
Yeah.
That appears to be a conflict.
Twenty-six.
Memorial Day, so.
Twenty-six, thank you.
We need to go to twenty-sixth, which will be our meeting after Memorial Day.
Taking that day off.
Memorial Day? We'll take a motion to have, at the public hearings after May twenty-sixth, at nine AM for the fiscal year twenty budget amendment.
So move.
I will second.
Motion by Abrams, second by Smavy. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we'll have the public hearing that date. Consider twenty-eighty agreement between Northwest Iowa Care Connection and Worth County as a member county. This is our new, uh, mental health region that we've been working on. Ken's put a lot of time in.
Jeff has reviewed.
Jeff reviewed it, everything looks okay?
Right.
Okay, um.
Next, so will we approve the Northwest Iowa Care, twenty-eighty, pre-Northwest Iowa Care Connection, Worth County as a member county?
All right, second.
Okay, a motion by Abrams, and a second by Smavy to approve this agreement. Um, I will take a roll call vote on this. Um, Abrams?
Aye.
Smavy?
All right.
Stone?
Aye.
Right, that motion will carry.
We will be officially remember them, or do we have?
Try one.
Do we have to separate from?
We go, we voted.
Recognition. Okay. Twenty-eight agreements, we have to do with that. We're just separated, we're done.
We're within the graces of the state because.
We did, yeah, we've been following steps, I just wonder if there's any more here.
Sure. But I need to consider personnel contracts between Northwest Iowa Care Connections and Worth County.
Again, Jeff looked at that.
All good on this one, too?
Okay.
I'm gonna take a motion to approve the contract. Second, motion by Smavy and second by Abrams. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. All right, Winworth Becko, I think Melissa's on there somewhere.
Yep, um, nothing to report other than the fact that I'm still working with that prospect for Winnebago County in order to set the next Winworth Becko meeting.
Okay, sounds good, um. When are you thinking, are we gonna, June, July, August? Any clues?
The next scheduled one quarterly is July, but we were going to meet before then. And I'm gonna get ahold of the, the prospect is in California. I'm gonna call them today, um, and try to set up a time for us to meet with them.
Okay, probably Zoom meeting, I would assume?
I would assume so, unless they're back in the area.
Okay. That sounds good. I guess whenever you get it figured out, let us know, so we can post it that we would have a Winworth Becko meeting.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Oh, I did a public hearing resolution. Uh, Jason Petersburg, you're next on the list.
We have, uh, filled out construction permit applications for the DNR as well as the DOT for the subdivision project. We did approve these previously, however, we have, we didn't submit those, um, with the change order in the works. So we have prepared a permits for the sanitary sewer, um, installation, water main installation, the stormwater, um, plan, and then as well as the DOT, we had to prepare that work in the right away, permit application for the grading work that'll take place within the, um, on-ramp right away there. So we were requesting, um, I guess, chair signature on these permit applications. Questions on those?
Just standard procedure for this kind of work, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, I saw will we authorize the chair to sign those permits?
I will second.
Okay, motion by Abrams, second by Smavy to authorize the chair to sign, uh, DNR and DOT construction permits. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion will carry. I can take care of that whenever we need to, Jason.
Yep, I will, I'll look you up this week, AJ. Um, one quick update, I guess, they did start construction out there. Um, Friday, late in the day, they found a drain tile. It goes underneath Wheeler Wood. We expected it was there, but by the looks of things, it must be plugged underneath Wheeler Wood. So we're gonna look into that a little more. Um, I'm hoping our storm sewer is deep enough to pick it up, if that's the direction we wanna go, but they did say it was about eight feet deep. For sure.
How big was it?
Eight or a ten inch, which would explain why that low area there is so wet. It's been getting fed by that tile and it's blocked underneath the road.
Oh, I wasn't asking. Well, I mean, yeah, have to look into it, I guess, and it was, yeah, hopefully we can make something work to get that reconnected, so it was bringing water into them, I'm assuming?
Yes, it filled the ditch pretty quick.
I bet. Okay, well, I guess, let us know what, what you guys come up with, and we can figure it out from there.
Will do.
Okay. Um. So on our agreements with the casino, the donation, development of land, um, covenants and all that, I don't believe we have a covenant yet, right?
No.
Jeff was still working on those, I think?
Um. I think he said they were okay. He's gotten gone apart, I believe.
Okay.
He said, go ahead and do the resolution approving the terms of the agreement and CCR.
And the CCR, which is the covenant.
They're just waiting for final attach.
Attachments?
They're the final with attachments.
Okay.
So he said it's, it's okay to go.
Okay.
Cause you, you write it, you know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
So first would be the memorandum.
Yep, take a motion to consider the memorandum of agreement for donation and development of Diamond Joe Worth property. Second, motion by Smavy and a second by Abrams. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion will carry. Now we'll move on, we consider the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions between Diamond Joe Worth LLC and Worth County, Iowa.
So move.
Motion, is there a second?
I will second it.
Motion by Abrams, second by Smavy, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. All right, Jason, need to consider change order number one. With existing contract dated October fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Can you explain that just a touch, please?
This is the change order adding the additional work to the project. I guess it's version two of change order number one with all of the, all of the work being on the east side of Wheeler Wood Road, the storm sewer going in the east road that Wheeler Wood Road. Um, the revised contract amount for the contractor is one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Um, we also revised the completion date. It's a, it was ninety-five working days. Uh, we've adjusted that to a hundred and five working day contract as part of this, this change order. The contractor did indicate, um, their agreement with it, or their concurrence, they have signed it back on April second. We were waiting on this land transfer, uh, before board's formal approval. And today we're requesting approval contingent upon, um, receiving the signature back from Boyd Gaming. Assuming we can get that in the next couple of days, we can get this change order approved and get the rest of the materials coming, as far as storm sewer, where it goes.
Question? All right, so basically we need a, a motion to, um, instead of change order number one to Winworth County and launch construction for the top of Iowa second addition subdivision project. Uh, motion to authorize the chair to sign upon receipt of the signed agreement between Diamond Joe Worth and Worth County pledging the donated land. Motion by Smavy.
Second.
Second by Abrams. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that motion will carry. And as soon as we see that one, I will sign it, just as soon as, again.
I have the permits, the originals of the change order, so assuming we get that back quick, I'll have you sign everything at the same time.
Okay.
We'll do the permits.
Sounds good to me. All right, so, anything else, Jason? Are we okay? You guys got any questions for Jason?
Keep it going.
I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, uh, consider second amendment to child support county staffing contract between Iowa Department of Human. All right, consider second amendment to child support county staffing contract between Iowa Department of the Human Services and Bureau of Corrections and Floyd County, which is the host of the political subdivision. Did you guys read that? Kind of confusing, but I read. Basically, it's just a regional child support recovery agreement or.
We've been in it for a while.
Right.
Floyd County, Mitchell.
Yep.
And Floyd County graciously still is. Cause Worth County used to do that.
Oh, really? All right, so I'll take a motion to, so both. Yeah, motion of second to consider second amendment of the child support county staffing contract. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I, I oppose, all right, emotional carry. All right. People's Service, Water and Wastewater, Chris, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
All right, you have any updates or questions or concerns for us?
Uh, the only update I got is Kennison got the building, the water plant tinned up, so it looks good. And then just that the contractors have got quite a bit of work done already.
Okay, good. Um, I think next Monday, early afternoon, we're going to, Mark Tomlinson and I are gonna meet out there with the siren people on where to put that iron near the water plant, so if you're available and would like to meet, just to give us an idea where to put it, if there's water main or something else in our way, kinda a good location. If you can't, maybe at least put a flag or mark out there of some sort, that would be a good spot, so we can take a look at that.
Sure, no, I can, I'll make myself available.
Okay, um, sounds like it's gonna be early afternoon, I don't exact, know the exact time yet, but it will be next Monday, so.
Okay, yeah, just give me a text message when you're coming out this way.
Okay, I will do that, thank you, Chris.
Chris, is it a po- Chris, is that a question? Is it a possibility that when I put this start sanitary sewer in, isn't there another water line or something in the road ditch there going that way? That would, plant that they could have hit that line at one time, that tile line? They never hooked it up?
Uh, we just crossed, we crossed Wheeler Wood right by the lift station going west and stayed in a ditch. So, and we were only six foot deep, so I don't think they would have hit anything.
All right, all right.
I mean, I wasn't there a hundred percent of the time, but I was there probably eighty percent of the time, and I never seen them hit any tile lines on the west side of Wheeler Wood.
Well, I'm, I'm stuck on the east side now, when they went south to that old water, the old sewage treatment plant.
Yep, there's a sewer.
When they stuck a lot, when they stuck a, you know, the line that went down to that property.
Right.
That old line.
That was put. Yep, that was put in, they just use the existing lift station force main, we use the same pipe, just put it into new plant. But they did dig in, the casino dug in a water line to their storage building, but that was only five or six foot deep.
Right, but what, what, what line, what sewage line went down to the old sewage plant?
That's the original one from the welcome center back from in, in the eighties. Went from the lift station all the way back to lagoons, and then we just tied in from the center of the lagoons.
Okay, well, is it possible when they put that line, was it possible they, when they put that line in, they could have hit that eight inch style?
No, they didn't, they were, they only added on to the force main from the center of the lagoon, so you're way further south. And they just went from the center of the lagoon down to the new plant.
All right, all right, I just trying to figure out, you know, possibility of somebody else coming prior, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right, yep.
And I'll see if they've got their push camera there and if they can shove it in and see where the problem is.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Good, anything else for Chris?
Chris.
Nope, nope, okay, thanks, Chris.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Well, next on the list, we have a resolution to rescind our request to cancel the contract with People's Service, twenty twenty dot oh five dot oh four dot zero. Basically, just rescinding our letter that we sent to them. Canceling our agreement, we're just going to stay in our agreement and the contract will automatically renew for one year on July first.
We'll make that motion.
Second, okay, there's a motion and a second out there, any other discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, Abrams, maybe, Stone, I, all right, we will send a letter to People's Service to rescind our notice. Okay, any reports? No reports, any payroll eligibility, salary changes?
Okay, and I would like to request, I don't have it in writing yet, but my coworkers for the primary, I would like to pay them the thirteen twenty-five our, our base instead of the ten fifty, just because of the situation.
Okay.
And just, just for this election at this point, I'll see what I think about what happens going forward.
Sure, okay. Basically, Sheriff's Office, it's like longevity stuff for, for employees there.
I'm gonna make them mostly approve.
Want you to approve the payroll salary changes, West maybe?
Second.
Second by Abrams, any other discussion? All in favor, I, I oppose.
Do you want a motion to approve the?
That's all. Yes, I'm, I think he's right.
Yeah.
Um, next, department head discussion. Discussion regarding our COVID-nineteen policies. Um, we had a pretty good discussion on Thursday. Right, yeah, Thursday at our meeting, I'd say a little confusing, but went good, I think we're all in order now, is there anything else on the policy portion that we need to?
I don't know.
Okay.
I just wanted to throw it up out there, just in case anybody wanted to talk.
Yep. As far as department heads, is there any issues with the policies that are set right now? We continue moving forward with the way we got it.
Not really, other than I've gotta let one employee who is adamant that they wanna be, they want it in writing that transportation is an essential service, so.
It is in writing.
Well, they haven't seen it apparently, so I'll take care of that.
Okay, sounds good. Um. Okay, how about some discussion regarding the possible date to reopen our county facilities, the public?
That's one thing that Doug Pro is interested in.
Okay, Doug Pro is, we've got a little intake on that, so go ahead and.
Good morning, I just wanted to report. Good morning, I'm sorry, I just wanted to report that our chief judge had a telephone conference with all the judges and magistrates in the second judicial district. We had submitted some questions, and one of those was who's responsible for cleaning, maintenance, those type of things in the courtroom. And the response was, once in court hearings commence, which is scheduled for us for June, for me, it's gonna be the day after your election.
June third.
June third is when I'm going to be scheduling magistrate trials and have the alternating all day, because we just got a heck of a backlog. But anyway, the question was, who will be responsible for disinfecting courtroom furniture, conference rooms, and judicial chambers? Consensus of opinion at the judicial council, which is all the chief judges and the Supreme Court, was that responsibility of county personnel to provide a safe environment in the courthouse. There is a realization that, you know, that can, the state court administration is going to be providing disinfectant to each courtroom with the expectation that some of the maintenance would, you know, would of course be provided by the county. He wanted us to contact our local board supervisors to impress upon them the need for greater maintenance once in court hearings start again. So that would be every other week when the county attorney has, you know, court days, or be more frequent cleaning. I usually schedule Tuesday, noon, I don't know if your maintenance individual is, you know, gonna be available, but I just wanted to highlight that that's one of the needs that will be coming up. The other issue that I visited with Jackie about this morning, I did a little looking, and one of the things are these sneeze panels to make sure people in the air, and I did some measuring and I did some looking, and on the magistrate bench, I would like to get a twenty-four hive, a thirty-six Y from a company called, has one inch underneath it to put papers and whatever. And I went upstairs and I measured the district courtroom, that would take about a five foot long one, because that's obviously a much bigger bench. But I wanted to see if there would be approval from the board for those two items.
Joe Dollar's name.
Well, yeah, the, the shorter one for the magistrate is one hundred and nine dollars, eighty-three cents, the one upstairs in the district room would be one hundred and ninety-nine, eighty-three. If you order two panels, you get a five percent, and that includes shipping. So we're, we're talking less than right around three hundred bucks.
That's installed or?
Yeah, they, they're freestanding.
Oh, freestanding.
They have these really good rubber legs on.
You just set them on there, you get tired of them, you can get rid of them.
And then someday down the road, if you have different facilities, they can do that.
It's something we gotta do, I suppose, right?
Do you know what you're gonna require for cleaning, is it gonna be in between people, is it just?
I think they're thinking kinda maybe in between.
Cause we're, we're in the, I, I don't know, and I don't know when or how, or we're gonna need another cleaning person or something.
Well, I would think that when we have district court trial days, so that's about every five to six weeks is when Jeff has a criminal trial. You would need, you would need more attention on those days. I'm usually Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, appearances would not be during the week, you know, if it come in those days. But every other Monday morning, the court day, so there'd be, be a need for someone there then to be doing the cleaning.
Can we limit spectators in? I mean, maybe it never is, Doug, I mean, you know, I mean, so that the cleaning is not excessive, I mean.
It wouldn't really be so much excessive as it would, I think, maybe wiping down chairs and tables.
Right.
Um, if we do the panel, and maybe if there's witness hearing and stuff.
But I mean, like if a small group of people followed in, the, the band, or whatever you wanna call them, and then left, and another group wanted, we have to defect, disinfect all the chairs and all that, or just the areas where you guys have worked?
You know, I don't.
I don't know what the rules.
I don't have the exact particulars, I don't think they have rules, I think this email is basically to give you gentlemen a heads up that it's gonna need more attention, and the county auditor, so she knows too.
Yeah.
I, I would think, like where your county attorney is, it wouldn't be the, you know, witness table.
Right.
And, and maybe where the witness chair is, I don't know about so much the, the benches out there where the public sits. I don't think that would take a whole lot, and I'm sure Jim would be willing to help a little bit too. I mean, it's wonderful that he's there, and he's there in my hearing day.
Okay.
And if you visit with him, he might be able to take some of that burden, you know, off too. But it's just to give you a heads up on that.
Yeah, no, it's.
Very, very sensitive to this.
I, I get it, I just, if we have to hire a part-time person for those days, if we can find one, we just wonder what their expectations would be, you know, if it's a total.
What I'm thinking is after each hearing, there'd be some type of dis- at least to the high-traffic hearings.
A couple of points on that, first of all, I wouldn't want Jim cleaning, he's a high-risk individual. But I do have a, I do have a proposal coming to you guys. On, my department's gonna take over our daily cleaning and not have Brian back in. We do have some stuff, we're gonna, so his job's gonna get less in my department, we feel we are doing a better job. So I do have a proposal I'll be sending at you on what we would request of him, but our time on him is gonna be cut way down.
Okay.
What do you mean, less with Jim?
No, no, no.
The Brian, Brian might have a little more time.
Jim's pretty important to me.
Yeah, no, you're not stealing him, didn't sound like it.
No, Jim, Jim will stay the same, but I don't want him cleaning, especially with his heart condition and his age.
Good point, and I'm sorry, I totally forgot about that. So, but, so we'd have someone else said, but, but I'm just mentioning to you that higher authorities are asked, so.
Again, it's just my opinion, I guess it's something pretty much have to figure out, we're gonna figure out how to do it.
Don't get much of a choice on it, do they?
No, we have to take care of the courses, and we're good.
Yeah. Okay, and you said that's June third, you're gonna start again, right?
Um, they, they can start hearings the first, Jackie and I have visited, she's using the magistrate courtroom through that Tuesday. I've got three big days scheduled for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and again, in the morning to the afternoon, I'm alternating two or three defendants every half hour to, to get through the backlog. After that, I visit with county attorney, I understand he's going full-time come July. I'm planning, most trial days are gonna be every Thursday with appearances on Tuesday. Small clean hearings, city hearings on Tuesday afternoons, Thursdays are gonna do more of the criminal trials.
So you're scheduling fifteen, twenty minutes between hearings, then so people, we, if they get a person, we can get somebody wiped out.
Trying to do that, and then where the congregation out in the hallway on the north side too, will need some attention.
Since we're on video, I better clarify that it's not part, I mean, it's not full-time for Jeff, but it's more part-time, he just isn't gonna have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missedpoke, you're right, he's, Kelsey's.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, I mean, I don't know, we'll have to, yes, decide if.
More stuff to figure out.
Right, and part of, part of our process, we've got a little, little time to get it, little time to get it in order by when you go back.
And I appreciate those two days too, cause that, that'll get me through the primary at least, thank you.
Anyway, I'll, can I visit with her then, and you hear the specs and go on the website and get those ordered? You'll be here then in two weeks, and then we should be ready.
Okay.
Any questions, any, any ideas? All right, thank you very much.
I'm gonna take care of the courts. Thanks, Doug. Right, um. So, with that being said.
Reopening.
When are we looking at reopening?
Um, department head feedback would be appreciated on this one.
Well, Jake is. When you open up again, Jake, is that the?
May eighteenth, by appointment only.
Eighteenth by appointment only?
Hear me? Yeah, May eighteen, yeah, May eighteenth by appointment only.
Is that for the state, or is that what you're shooting for?
That's just what we came up with, yep.
Hey, Jake?
Yeah.
Hey, this is Joel, did you see that invite for that program for today?
Right, right, right.
Um, no.
Five o'clock for a program that might possibly work for your office? I'll, I'll contact you later about it.
Okay.
It, it might be an application.
Is that the wait inside thing?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've got the, the suggestions that we've had from the state and the treasurers, it's like each, each, uh, my gals is gonna keep their own appointment book. And so when the customer comes in, they'll go let them in, they come up, and they'll do their business, and then they'll escort them back out. And then come back in, sterilize their area, and then go back out and get their next appointment. So it's gonna be a lot of running back and forth, but they want, they want us cleaning between each customer.
Okay, sounds like the way of the world right now, so.
Yeah.
All right, um.
And I'm technically open today, um, they're gonna go, if anybody does come and vote, I hope they don't, I hope they use their absentee ballot request form that came in the mail to them. I have, we by law have to be available for in-person and curbside if needed. So, um, they'll go through the sheriff's office, and then we'll get them to the magistrate room, and we'll vote there if, if they need to come here. get them to the magistrate room and we'll vote there if, if they need to come here.
Probably should strongly either get it in the paper, you know, definitely, strongly weekly encourage people to try to vote absentee and vote at home. I, I understand people's concerns, but.
Got enough stuff going on, just trying to process them and having people come in. I know that's the right, but I, I wish they would just.
Can, Republic says.
Yeah.
And we require people, not that I'm a big fan of this either, wear a mask if they're gonna come in the building.
And not be sick if they're gonna come into the building.
Well, that's the thing, if we.
Just the, just a question, I mean, if you wanna come in and vote, you have to wear a mask. I don't, I don't know, can we do that?
I have no clue. I'm not an attorney.
I'm not either, it's, I don't know what, what we can and cannot do under this. I mean, we're here, but I mean, you're here, so that's, but it's.
I think some other counties are doing that. They'd have to reach out if I was enchanted. There's any info on that, I'll be.
I know, I've seen some other treasurer's offices that are doing, they're refusing service if they don't have masks.
Well, I understand some businesses are doing that, or menards, you have to wear a mask, mask to get into those, told out there today.
Well, they saw you on.
Did you say treasurer, did you say treasurer's office or businesses?
No, treasurer's offices. There are some treasures that are, that have been open the whole time through this. Uh taking appointments and stuff, but the only way they're letting people in the door is if they have a mask.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Something we could definitely be thinking about.
Yeah, sure.
Well, your safety is important. And I, to get people's right to wanna vote, so.
Yep.
I appreciate that, and I'm glad they want to.
I'm, I'm doing the best I can to make it all available.
Appreciate that.
Any other thoughts? Um I know, Dan, you guys have been open kind of already, you're kind of taking a lot of the traffic. Um what are you thinking of, are you gonna ever, are you gonna fully open up? Or what are you thinking when?
We basically have been open with most of our stuff. Uh it's just some of our policies and in our jail um which really don't affect whether we open or not. I mean, as far as all of our other stuff, we're open already that we deal with the public.
I guess I have a question for you then, and um it'd be Teresa and Cindy too. Um, do you guys want the doors open on, the rest of the doors open on May eighteenth? Or do you still wanna have them locked and go by appointment and start there?
Teresa just said, per opinion, if they're opening, treasurer's open on the eighteenth, the rest of us should open at the same time.
The treasurer's are doing appointment only, so.
Right, yeah.
We could go that way.
Go that way.
Teresa's also looking, looking at putting up shields on them. Cindy, just unmute.
Cindy, what are you thinking?
Oh, we're pretty lucky here down in the Incentures office. We measured our desk and we're like six feet apart. And then at the counter, you know, it's so easy just to let one person in at a time, and so when they do come, so really it's, I feel pretty safe down in this area, so whenever you guys feel like you need to, you know, wanna open fully, that, you know, I support that, so.
Would you, would you like to go by appointment or just open the doors?
I think for us, we're fine for opening the doors, but you know, like you say, we don't have much public contact. So I would put, you know, my weight of it, you know, at the low compared to, to upstairs, so.
Sure. Well, the biggest thing I think is, what we're looking at is the cleanliness or the effectiveness of the whole courthouse. Just bringing people in in general too, so. Um. How about Teresa? What do you think? I see you uh think we should open at the same time, but in your opinion, do we go, you guys wanna go appointment only or just open the doors? Assuming she'll chat us back.
Is it possible if they wanna come in, if they, if they stand on the door, they must wear a mask?
And I guess the only concern I have is if having people wandering around.
Right.
If
For sanitation.
If we open the doors, that, that would be, I mean, I've pretty much been taking people in there. Um that would make it simpler for me, but then is anybody gonna be concerned if there's people that aren't where they're supposed, where they're supposed to be? Or make sure they get to where they're supposed to be for their appointments? And if, if they back up and we have more than people, or people six feet apart or anything like that, it shouldn't be a problem, but I just want that out there.
Well, and.
And you, you're in the building too, and will it work for the clerk of courts office? I mean, they have a window, that doesn't really.
But, so Dan, did you guys mark out your six feet if you've got people in your waiting area?
Yes, I did.
So we would have to do that as well if we opened up in public, I would imagine.
And we really don't have a waiting area per se. I mean, it's just a hall.
Couple of points I'll throw out is, number one, it's not a burden on my department, what we've been doing. It's a little bit, but it's not bad. We can handle it. But number two, when you have district court open up, that's a whole different deal when people are shuffling upstairs. I don't know how we can hold them out, because I, I, that's another question to go on there.
What if we kept the doors locked and had everybody responsible for their own people starting the eighteenth and then starting June first? We open them up totally. Would that be a reasonable compromise?
Just to see how that goes and how the next few weeks go.
We could review how it's going.
That, that's.
Maybe not say we're gonna open up, but maybe review and what do we have up for that.
I mean, it makes sense, because we don't know what the next two weeks is gonna bring, alone, two weeks of appointments.
Hey, hey, Dan? When does district court open up for actually taking people upstairs?
I have no idea right now.
Okay, 'cause that, I mean, that's, that's the traffic that I guess I'm more worried about than anything.
That was June one at the earliest, I think.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're good until June at least for that traffic.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I know just last week, um the judge was expecting someone upstairs because they had the, the recorder for them down, running around calling the halls for somebody, so I don't know if they're doing some stuff right now or not. Um. But that, that would be the whole other thing, is you can't let someone not go to the courtroom. That's a violation of not being able to go up and hear that or do that, so.
Mm-hmm. But I would think they'd have to be under the same umbrella as, then Sam has to actually escort that person in upstairs and then back out again.
I would agree, and, and that's my question. So if we go to appointment only, there's not gonna be any walk-in traffic? Because we get, you know, quite a little bit of walk-in traffic going in different areas.
I'd say everybody that's responsible for their own appointments, they walk their people in, they walk their people out, and then that's less of a burden on your office, Dan.
Yeah, which I'm not concerned on that, but what if you got that one person that walks in, we're still gonna do it the same way? We call up and?
Yeah.
Or turn them around, say, well, you gotta get an appointment. That's my question.
Pretty much. Call, call the um office that you wanna deal with.
It's a training process.
We can have all their phone, I think we have all their phone numbers out there already.
I think so.
Jim, you wanna talk?
And grew up in the community.
Yeah.
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 Just try and give his cell phone a call and.
Jim's multi-just.
I talked last time on the phone, that's what he said. I thought he meant he's on our.
I get, yeah. He unmuted himself.
No, I unmuted him, so that's not bad.
So I say, doors stay locked. Everybody takes care of their own appointments. And we'll revisit, we'll revisit in the next two weeks after that with a possible open on June one.
Sounds like most of the comments from what people are saying, same thing.
And then for everybody's information, I do have a uh vendor that, that I reached out to, No Way Inside. They've got a demo at one o'clock today, if anybody's interested in maybe using, utilizing some of those technologies, but um I've heard good things about it.
What are they doing, sir?
So it's, it's called No Way Inside, so they, they actually, it's a scheduling kind of off-court program. Um there's been a couple iterations that counties have been using. This one just came to me from my account, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Sheriff, you're muted. Did you wanna say something?
Uh for just on general stuff, Joel, you need to come up ease here doing us camera work. Um, we were supposed to host jail school this week. We had one of the biggest jail schools planned for the casino. Obviously, that got canceled, but we're doing it on a webinar, so a lot of my people will be at the E O C um doing their training. The only other thing is, I am on baby watch this week. My youngest daughter is gonna do this week, so I may run out of here in a hurry. I don't know what hole to sign up outside the hospital or what, but uh mama said we would still be going, so.
They're starting to open up a little.
Well, keep your schedule open and, and good luck with that.
Good luck, yeah.
Um Teresa's asking if you agree with her going with her shield.
Yeah, is that? No problem. Is that a?
The only thing.
Kind of gonna be a permanent thing?
Yeah, hers is permanent. The only issue I have is and it, it's in our budget, but keep in mind that just because it's in everybody's budget doesn't mean we have the money, because the money we thought that was in the budget is not necessarily coming. All of it.
Are we better off?
So we need to start.
You start watching that.
Yeah.
Are we better off with the portable, like the burgos looking at? I mean, that are a little less money, man. I mean, that, that would have to be an installation, I think, if I go back to plans, but.
Yeah, it was all installed.
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, four hundred bucks probably isn't.
No, I know, I get it.
But every time, every, every office that does this.
That's four thousand.
And possibly, I, I'm not gonna do anything right now.
Okay, I didn't know if you're gonna want one at the desk, main desk there.
If I do anything, I'd rather do something a little more permanent also, and I'm not ready to figure it out yet. I, I got too much.
Yep, I get it.
Because I wouldn't mind just moving my counter up and having an actual yeah, that we can shut and reconfiguring a little, but if you'd find me a new building, I wouldn't have to do that.
Now's the perfect time to get you that, right?
It's just awesome.
I've heard stories about.
Yeah, yeah, that, that magical building that.
Magic and phones, magical.
Yeah, all magic.
We're working on it, we're working on it.
Since, since we're on that discussion of money, uh I, I think, and I think the other two supervisors probably agree with me, we do kinda really need to be frugal right now, because yeah, I know our budgets are set and you guys are entitled to it, but the downfall of it is, is we're probably okay right now, but two or three months down the road, we're not getting um road use tax, we're not getting delinquent taxes. Hotel motel, casino money, we're not getting a lot right now. And it's really, we're really probably gonna notice that by, I would say, August and September.
Uh July, probably.
July, probably, when you knew your roles were on there.
Um, basically, I think what I'm asking, and the other guys can speak for themselves also, just be really frugal. Um if you don't need it, try not to buy it, but you know, we still gotta operate.
Well, in COVID stuff, I'm guessing there's grant money at some point, but I don't know when and how and all that good stuff yet, so.
I, I guess, Teresa, I'd say use your own discuss, discretion on that. I do think it's something that I mean, you know, Doug came in and requested it. I've been thinking about it and learning what you guys were gonna do, especially if you're gonna open up. We're definitely not going into, it's a free-for-all like we had in the past.
Yeah.
So you guys, all departments are gonna have to think about how they're gonna keep safe here in Work County, I guess, I mean, that's.
And continue business this way, probably through next winter even.
Oh, easy.
I mean.
I mean, if these predictions come true, we're, we're easily looking at it, well, be more sure, so.
Any COVID expenses, I would, I would um keep track of them separately so that they can be um tracked and um possibly get funding. Um and I'm gonna be recommending in the near future um when uh we appropriate for fiscal twenty-one, starting July one, that we might only appropriate half of the budget at first, or something like that. I, I, I don't think we wanna do salary freezes yet, but I think we're gonna at least just wanna roll out, and we'll need to talk about a lot.
We got a lot, yeah.
Yeah, but there's stuff that we're gonna have to start doing to conserve what we do have for money.
Jim's ready to talk, okay.
Jim, go ahead.
On my end, I guess, we're just following the governor's recommendations at this point and what the D N R state parks are doing, as well as our statewide affiliate. You know, they're looking at soft reopening on, of May fifteenth for parks. I talked with A J a little bit last week about it, one evening, and um Keenan's is a different cat all in itself. Um, most of our park users from day to day come from hotbed communities. They come from Austin and Rochester. I would say eighty to ninety percent. And so what we're looking at possibly doing is keeping the gate locked there and having it open to foot traffic only. And trying to discourage, you know, the hundred people a day that come or from essentially coming and using the park. Like, I mean, that's, Keenan's is our issue. The campgrounds will, you know, for the most part, it's local users, and we can soft-open and do every other site, like some of the other counties are talking about doing, and what the state's talking about doing, but our biggest exposure, I feel, is, is Keenan's quarry.
I'm gonna speak up and support Jim on that. That's, we have a lot of issues out there normally, and this would just create it worse for us.
Sure, and I, I understand. I, I never, I get up there a couple times a year, but I never realized where all that traffic was coming from. I always saw Minnesota plates, you know, I see local people out there too, but after talking with Jim, I understand a little more of how that park works. So yeah, that is probably a good idea. And you know, you're working however the, the state is going guidelines, but also with your board too, on what they suggest is, is probably a good idea.
And like with the campground reopening, they've actually, our state association and the D N R has come up with kind of depending on what level of restriction we are, different levels of cleaning and different levels of, you know, how many people you can essentially allow in your park. It, I, I can see it being kind of an enforcement nightmare for us, but at the same time, I think that people hopefully will respect it, so.
That sounds good.
If I could just chime in kind of on what everybody else was talking about, I think that as a county, we'd be wise to, if one department's doing appointment only and cleaning workstation stuff, I think that that's, you know, it'd be nice to stay uniform across the county as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think that's how we're gonna start it for now. It's, it does seem like the, the, like you say, soft opening, I guess. Let's do it this way for a little bit, see how it goes. Keeps a little more control of, of the facilities, I think, so.
Jesse, there she is. Eh, she was.
No, she's still there.
She's still there, so. Jess, you got anything? Does she?
I'm muted.
I'm trying. I think she's unmuted. There we go. I was fighting her on the wind here.
Yeah, I'm here.
How's it going over there?
Oh, good, good. Um, the one thing I did wanna mention is you know, I know, I'm sure all of you have noticed the increase in the number of positive cases for Iowa lately. Um, and they've, the state has opened up those test Iowa sites and plan to continue opening up depending on the number of people that get on that website and do the assessment, and the number of people needing testing. So that, um, that along with the state is also doing surveillance testing of large businesses and nursing home staff, so the increase in numbers is likely, we're likely to see that due to that additional testing that's going on. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that up to you guys, so you're aware of that.
Question for you, Jessica, and I haven't looked, and I don't know if it shows on Department of Public Health, but are they showing what percentage of these people have actually recovered since they've been diagnosed or starting to?
They have on their site, like for each county, they have like the number of cases and the number of people that have recovered.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, it's, yeah, I mean, and I haven't looked.
The numbers never change. They only go up, and I always, to me, it always seems weird, it's okay. Work County's had one case for over thirty days now. I would assume they'd either died or, or recovered. So why isn't Work County back to a zero until we get a new case, is always my opinion on how that site should work. So people do realize that, yes, this is bad, but yet we are, people are surviving. So why isn't Worth County back to a zero until we get a new case, is always, in my opinion, and how that site should work, so people do realize that, yes, this is bad, but yet we are, people are surviving. And that's what I feel about it, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, those numbers don't change, um, but yeah, it just says recovered or not recovered, but yeah, the numbers will just keep going up and up, but.
There, that's Iowa Department website there.
Coronavirus Iowa, dot Iowa, dot go.
Yeah, so it does show the cure, or cured, whatever recovery.
Other than that, any issues over there, Jess?
Nope, everything's going good.
Okay, I, I guess, have you guys been, had your doors open or have you been locked up too?
We're locked yet, we have people, people will show up and they'll just knock on our door and, um, Mindy will talk through the window with them and see what we can help them with, but yeah, our doors are locked yet.
Okay, um, are you guys gonna change anything on the eighteen? Possibly or not?
We'll just probably continue, we don't have a lot of traffic, public traffic here, um, so you know, if they call and they wanna meet us here, we'll probably just, you know, do the same as everybody else is doing. If they call and need to come, we can help them and, yep.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you very much.
Yep.
Yeah, Mark Hamilton, do you have anything new or different?
Uh, nothing much here, I, I did work last week with, uh, Northwood Foods, they had some, uh, requests looking for some masks, I gave them some, uh, leads on a, a few places that they could order large volumes, they were looking for cloth masks, that's what the CDC recommends for their, their employees, uh, there's a place in Cedar Rapids that makes them on the scale that they would need, got them hooked up with them, also put in a request to the state after the president made them a, uh, critical infrastructure, and we did, we're able to get some, uh, procedure masks, more like the surgical mask, up for the time being for them until they can actually get, uh, the cloth mask on site, they do have some, but sometimes their employees, they forget them at home, or they, uh, they need to change them out just from in, over the course of the day. So they're gonna use those as extras until they get more cloth masks, um, other things, uh, when you start opening your, your courthouse up and you start doing your cleaning, you might wanna, you know, start now thinking about what you're gonna use for your cleaning supplies and start ordering that stuff, get it in now, because, um, most things, there's a delay of anywhere from two to four weeks in order, if you're ordering stuff to get it in, so whatever you, you're sourcing, if you're gonna use a, a disinfecting spray or bleach or something like that, um, figure that out now and then either work with Brian or have Brian work with me, I'm trying to find some of that stuff. Um, it's not the easiest, I did get signed up through Amazon as the, able to buy the COVID nineteen's stuff, they prioritize shipping and sales to frontline places, and so I am signed up for that, so we can get priority, but even then, I just checked earlier this morning in front of, for like, uh, dis- disinfecting Clorox type wipes, um, it's still middle of July before those, those would be delivered, so, from Amazon, so. Maybe through the hardware store locally or somewhere else, they can order them faster, there'll be something to talk with Brian, let's see. If that's what you wanna use, or if we, you can use a spray bottle and a towel, that might work just as well, so.
And Mark, did you line that up for tax exempt?
Yep, it's all tax exempt.
Thank you.
And then, uh, I do have, uh, more hand sanitizer available if anybody needs that for, uh, their office, or if you're gonna have the, the courtrooms open and stuff like that, and you wanna have a, um, spray bottle or dispenser of some sort there, it's the, uh, alcohol-based, you know, the watery, uh, works good, uh, probably work best in like a little spray bottle, that people use.
I'm gonna wanna get some kind of sand outside of the court, or the courtrooms when you put sanitizer, it's probably one thing I wanna have there.
Yep.
Some place to set it.
Okay.
I do have those too for the office uses, so the public health is still seeing. Something.
All right, sounds good, um, I think we got everybody else, didn't we? Any other questions or concerns, I guess, we'll go this direction for now and figure it out, week by week basis still. If not, I'm gonna go to supervisor's weekly reports.
And we had a teleconference meeting with Justice Kerry last week, and working on the biolos and everything and the things, hired another person, I'm not sure who it was. They hired her.
For the CEO?
No, the CEO's been hired, this is a, oh, okay. Be able to make it on Wednesday for the interview, so.
All good?
Um, I did, we did a phone conference with the joint drainage deal for five nine crossing, um, and basically went vague, it's a controller on that, but we had our input into that, everything's go on that, and then also the department had a meeting at the end of the week, that's all I really had this week, so.
I did suggest to Bill later that he should call for a roll call vote on that, being a joint district and being where we were, to have called for a roll call vote.
From all, all three counties?
All three counties.
I mean, we did kind of a, anybody said we were in favor of that.
Been nice to work, you're.
That's where these phone conferences and the simple I just does not work very well.
That we should have a, that way we should have roll call votes.
Yeah, I agree.
More, more roll call votes.
Yep.
Well, they're, they're the lead counties.
They are the lead counties.
I realize they are the lead county, but still, we, we approved it, Mark and I were both on.
Yeah.
AJ was not late.
Should've said, is Worth County in favor of this, I mean, or simply, you know, are you guys okay with it, and I mean, it's kind of that way, but yeah, it's kind of free for all.
Yeah, it's kind of free for all, cuz at Worth County, this is Mark, I, I've been done. Control, the more.
Would've been more formal, or we want some more, yeah, I don't know.
We're making this stuff up if we go.
Yeah. It has to be adjusted, I mean, it has to be adjusted.
That's right, except we do a drainage.
No. No.
I had a phone conference with, uh, North Iowa Regional Housing Authority last week and, um, bunch of, bunch of stuff on the HUD portion of it, um, rule changes, temporary rule changes, um, things like that. Uh, they do have some open houses throughout the area, but they're trying to get those filled back up, apartments, houses, whatever. Other than that, it's going pretty good there, but yeah, they're just doing the same thing, a lot of that changes to deal with the situation as far as, uh, they, they can't evict anybody right now, I don't believe, so, whether it's right or wrong, uh, the tenants get to stay, so. On that kind of, of the public housing and the HUD housing stuff, so, but they're working through it, so. Other than that, yeah, just the, uh, department head meeting is it, other than that, so, um, any else for next week's agenda? Not, uh, would take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Want to say, all favor I?
I.
I, both, he is adjourned, thank you everyone. You.